All right, good night, one down.
Mike, I'm pretty busy. I'm at twenty minutes.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of February eleventh?
I'll say it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can Keith go off the south portion of the building? No, that's the fuel. Fuel actually go off two tanks. Two tanks. Our station, uh, you know, for our, uh, yeah.
Please two come out of the crane. Make a motion to pay the bills for February twenty fifth?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Water?
Water doing good. Keep working on the new plant, it's looking pretty good, you guys saw that?
It looks nice down there.
It is.
What do you want to do with the old one?
We were debating on that.
Why, we were down there this morning, trying to figure out, can we remove the filters and keep the old building, put a new roof on it, use it for storage?
Me and my brother was talking about it the other day, it was outside, you know.
He just wanted.
Put all the, all water stuff in there.
Well, you're thinking, keep something for the building, you know, just to have even just for, hey, this used to be the old water treatment plant, you know?
Well, it was built in nineteen seventy nine, so, old, but not like our first one or something, it's been around a while. There's a lot of, there's stumps in there, holes, and there's raised spots, and it's like, trying to smooth things out to where you could actually use it, it's a little questionable, but the guys are gonna get together a, an estimate of what kind of materials we need to, to get it back in operation, and if not, would, it's already in our contract to have it tear it down, so.
Mike, you didn't say anything to him about the, today while you was there, about just leaving the whole thing alone?
Oh, no, not about lea- leaving the tanks in there.
Leaving everything and just letting us take care of it, or?
We're supposed to get numbers for what it was gonna cost to have it completely removed, and then come from there.
I thought, thought it something, I thought if we could just leave it alone, save a bunch of money from having them to tear it down stuff, and we take care of it.
It's already in the contract that they tear it down, so.
Well, I know that, except it can be changed, I mean. I just feel like to, after this, get every dime I can get.
Travis says no.
Yeah, I agree. I agree. I'll second that.
Travis even trying to get more money. Trying.
Okay, questions on making the payments?
All right, Travis, say something.
The ones that are continuously getting white notices? Yes, and they don't pay. I think that they should have to pay everything upfront before the water gets turned back on.
Satisfied with that?
Yep, yep.
It should be.
We've got a couple of them that.
We had to pay our one bill all up, huh?
So, you might assume that they're not paying at all, but.
Well, they'll come in, let's say the bills go out next month, the first, and disconnect notices are hung up on Wednesday, the twenty sixth.
For, um, payment.
So, so then on, on the, the fifth, the shut-off date, they come in on the fourth and say, hey, here's what I owe on a disconnect notice. All right, the bill that we sent out on the first is not due till the fifteenth. So, yes, the ordinance says that they have to pay up in full, but can you legally make somebody pay before it's even due, just to get your water turned back on? Or, what if somebody comes in, it happens pretty regularly, hey, I know the shut-off's on the fifth, I get paid Friday morning on the seventh, can I have two days to, to get my bill in there, to get my payment in? Well, we've always worked with people because it's a small town and it's not a big city that has to be nasty, I guess you wanna say it. And for the people that are being late and being shut off, they're being charged, well, starts out at twenty-five dollars, and then it's fifty dollars, and then seventy-five dollars, so they're paying a premium to have the water turned on off. It doesn't take an hour or two hours, I mean, you get old Troy, hey, just turn this guy's water off. Five minutes and it's awesome.
But it's the same people over there.
Oh, yes, it's the same people. I mean, some people in Goshport have good jobs, make good wages, they can pay their bills, and then there's several that can't. They're on fixed income times, and a year ago, we was paying fifty-five dollars for a water and sewer bill, now we're paying a hundred dollars for a water and sewer bill. And, I mean, it's up to you guys, and the ordinance does say that, yeah, you gotta pay it in full, but I'm just not sure legally that you could force somebody to pay in advance, and that's basically what you're doing. If it's not due to the fifteenth, and you're making them pay on the third or fourth to turn their water back on.
What if they're?
Wouldn't be right. No, I said, that's not right. You turn the water back on, it, they pay the fee to turn it back on, do they pay them?
Yeah.
And then you're, but they, you're asking them to go ahead and pay up to the fifteenth.
Paying for the next month's bill, I don't see that.
No, I don't see that either.
What I'm saying, what I'm saying is, they pay all the late charges, the fees, what they owe on the, the shut-off date, then the fifteenth, they got a new water bill to start over with.
That's what I'm saying.
That's what I'm, yeah.
That's what I was saying.
I mean, if you get to where you pay, they have to pay in advance, your own town's gonna lose a lot of revenue because, and I'm gonna get the late fees, and it averages twenty, twenty-five per, per person, per account.
I can see working with some people, say, you don't let them get two or three months behind.
Now, that, that oughta be a kinda judgment call on the days and stuff, on, on Donnie, you know, he can, a couple of days, I'm sure he'll go along with it. You know, you talk to him two days later, check or something, and they pay it up, fine on me.
You guys only have a problem with Joe Smith, we don't have a Joe Smith, probably, but if we have, Joe Smith comes in and says, hey, I get paid Friday, and I can, I can, if you go out and shut it off on Friday, you don't have a problem. And then if he did come in Friday, then Monday it's turned off.
I'd say it's fine.
Shut off Friday?
I'm supposed to be over the water, so, I'd say it's fine.
I'd say he's done it by Friday at four o'clock, or four thirty, go out and shut it off that night.
What I have a problem with is people that run a bill up by six hundred dollars and come in and say, here's two hundred dollars, I'll bring you two hundred next week, and they don't show back up.
Don't show back up, no.
To me, it would just.
Yes, I can't, yeah.
Yeah.
Elec- electric company don't let you do it, the gas company don't let you do it?
Nobody else.
They gotta pay it, but they pay it.
Don't kid yourself, elec- electric company's pretty lenient. I know two accounts that didn't pay the last month's bill, and they didn't even pay all that month's bill to get, to keep their lights on. Because when they got the disconnect notice, they say right under, if you, uh, pay this amount, it will keep them, have them the light shut off, and it was like half of what they was behind on it. Uh, the lifetime, it doesn't take too long to go around and turn the people's lights off, I mean, there, there's.
Well, I don't want us to either, Sam. I don't want, see the tank getting a hole in it, with people five, six, seven, eight hundred dollars.
No, you wouldn't know, well, who's taking advantage of us, no more so than we would, unless you tell us. You guys, you gotta, that's what the judgment should be on, on you to know whether there.
No wonder it would be more on you.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, it'd be you both of you, yeah.
I can see them getting one month behind, and then the next month, get it all caught back up by the next month. I can see that.
I'll learn one month.
Month after month, just paying a little here, paying a little here. It's gotta, it's gotta come to a stop.
Yeah.
And I also told the guys, when they go out to shut the water off from now on, to padlock it.
Yeah.
They are, yeah.
Cause you go shut them off, they go back out there, and they turn them right back on.
I've been checking this one every couple of days, and it should lock it off.
You're right, that's what we need to know how to do that.
Don't you have a, 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 a tool to turn them water off?
Not really.
No, not really, you can use a pair of vice grips or anything.
Let's just don't be prudish.
Yeah, well.
It's a, it's illegal.
I'm just saying.
It's still legal for them to come out and turn their own water back on.
Well, I know that, but, uh, if they got the tool, they can't, like, on the one I had, it, you had to have a tool, you wouldn't want to turn it off. And only you guys could have that.
Way down there, I mean, our tool's that long, so it.
Yeah. Yeah.
And.
I used to have stand.
Everybody, everybody can turn the water and off and on, oughta have a key to the padlock. I know Troy's got one, I've got one, Vic's got one, I don't know if Donnie's got one or not, Donnie can get one, so those four of us can.
So as far as the payments go, we need to verify that we're gonna, say it does not have to be paid up until the next.
Right.
Due, because paying ahead, right, I don't think that's correct.
No, that's not.
But whatever's, um, should be satisfied before it gets turned back on.
And this is, I mean, there's circumstances, that, if there's circumstance, like the one out here behind us, you guys was approached, and, yeah, if they pay the, what's it, eight hundred dollars? Then we'll turn it back on, because they, they come in, they pay the house, and like, two weeks or three weeks, right?
Then you turn it. He needs thirty-two dollars now. Okay, so what are we doing with this?
Outstanding balance.
To be paid in full before.
So we shouldn't have to make a motion on this, because you said it's already in ordinance.
Yeah, we just have to.
We should clarify that that's what, which is my account, so it should be paid in full.
Yeah. Okay, so we're.
I got some new pieces, we're gonna, we're gonna put a new sprinkler system in again, uh, to waste plant, and Keith's pulling up. Takes a day and like, two, two and a half hours in the morning, both of us, to get the full wash down. It was really out of control, but I haven't had a high water bump, except for this afternoon, it's the first time I've had a high water valve in weeks.
Yeah.
Not cold, but.
Yeah, had one.
It's not much to change, the cost didn't happen today, what?
Don't know. Is this on, is this on the storm?
No.
It's on wastewater plant. You know, wastewater? Well, you. I had to go reset the valve. You will get infiltration from the, the falling and runoff.
That's true.
You will get. So what's, very pipes will leak inside as well? If people stopped putting baby wipes down, um, fentanyl products down, it would help our waste plant immensely.
I wish we could figure out a way to trace it back to where it comes, comes from.
If we get potato chip bags, Coca-Cola wrappers off of Coca-Cola bottles.
Why?
I don't know, we flush this stuff, I guess.
What's the name, what's the name of the tank that you're putting the sprinklers in?
Clarifier.
Well, I got an update on any load station. Hopefully, it will get fixed tomorrow.
Good, good, good.
But they have an emergency somewhere else, so it may not be tomorrow.
Yeah, I'm gonna need them to come out and suck the stuff out of the waste station too, pretty soon, but.
Steve?
Yeah.
You're up.
Uh, I'm kinda right on, you have the contract, I feel like it's.
Okay, um, I promised the last couple of meetings until I was able to get a copy of the contract. Here's, here's my take on our operations, uh, management agreement with Bynum Fanyo. Uh, I am satisfied, after looking at the agreement, that Bynum Fanyo is responsible for hauling services. It says in here, it doesn't specifically address, uh, hauling, uh, but it does, uh, say, in the scope of services, that they are to plan, assign, and direct labor, material, resources, to maintain the town's water distribution, wastewater collection, and treatment facilities. So I would say that that's a, a part of the maintenance agreement. Now, having said that, uh, we're currently in a five-year contract that expires in December of twenty twenty-six. We can terminate that agreement with thirty days' advance notice, but, uh, it does run. I, uh, I, I, I don't know the answer to this question, perhaps Don can tell me. Uh, the provisions of the agreement, um, stipulate that they're to receive, beginning in twenty twenty-one, five thousand and five hundred dollars per month for the scope of their services, that goes up according to the Consumer Price Index, uh, on an annual basis. Um, that fifty-five hundred dollars includes hauling. If they're separately billing us for hauling, then that's a violation of the agreement. Are they?
Yeah, I don't, I don't think it reads that way. They're responsible for scheduling when it needs to be hauled out, and I don't think they're responsible, uh, they are responsible for certain things, like, uh, pre-maintenance, uh, there, there's a list in there of what they're responsible for.
There, there's a whole list, a schedule, uh, Schedule B has a whole list of things that they're responsible for, but hauling's not one. Um, you can infer that hauling is part of their maintenance responsibilities, um, but I don't, I don't see anything separately in here about haul. And I would say that the fifty-five hundred dollars that it has listed here, it says that it's for the full scope of services. All right, it doesn't say services plus we can bill you separately for any additional hauling charges or anything else. So if they're doing that, to my way of thinking, that's outside of the scope of the contract. If you see anything, I, I'd be more than happy to, to review that, but I don't see that in the scope of service.
Well, talk to them about doing repairs and stuff like that, after the board's approval, it'll be billed separately.
Says, well, make repairs to, to services, cost of materials shall be billed at cost plus fifteen percent. Uh, emergency repairs is initiated, repairs will be billed, uh, at cost plus fifteen percent. So, talks about emergency repairs, is hauling a repair, or is that, is that maintenance? My, my belief is that that's maintenance, if they have to come out on an emergency basis as part of the repair and do that, and I can see that, but I, I just don't, don't see that there's a separate line item, and this is their Schedule B that they insisted on having, it's not in there, and to the extent that, you know, they're billing us for it, then maybe we need to have a discussion with them. So the second thing I would say is that, whenever we consider renegotiating the contract, needs to be specific, that that's in fact what we're going to do, and how their bill is to be determined, because if they're gonna do hauling for us, then we need to know how much we're going to pay them for it, so that it could be competitively bid for a lesser amount, if that's what they're doing. Basically, if, if you take the position that, that they can bill us, then it's carte blanche, whatever they wanna charge us at this point in time, and, and I don't agree with that.
I have a question, if I might, so, about two years ago, Donnie called, and you put it out for bid, that, and that was during the scope of their contract, right? So what?
Yeah, it was, it was back in twenty-two, wasn't it?
Yeah, and they, so their contract, you said.
Twenty twenty-one.
So.
Oh, but contract for hauling wasn't twenty-two.
So, when Donnie put it out for bid to haul the wastewater treatment plant, which is what my contract is stating, they all bid on it, Byron, Brown, Todd, me, and I think he had sent it out to some other people, but they weren't interested. So, my question is, if they felt like their contract was part of that hauling, um, my concern is, is why did they let it go ahead and go out for bid? And they lost the bid, but they never came back and said, hey, this is in violation of our contract, we're supposed to haul it. So they let me haul it for two and a half years, didn't say anything, but I beat, I was the, I was awarded the bid because I was the chief of this at the time, so.
I guess in answer to your question, um, perhaps we paid you for two and a half years, that we should not have had to have paid you, if that was in fact included in the contract. So, I, again, I, it's not specifically referenced in this agreement about hauling, but I take that as being a maintenance, included within the term of, of maintenance. If there's a disagreement about that, then we need to have, so, so are they, who's hauling now? Bynum Fanyo? And are they billing us separately for the, for the hauling? We need to, uh. Take a look at this, at least, question, why they're, they're billing us for that.
Bynum Fanyo is very busy, always busy, always behind. Like, if I had to have something pop right away, and they can't get to it, can I still use Steve?
The answer's no, they're in violation of their contract. And they're, again, there are emergency provisions in here, repair provisions, but my, my position is, is that it's included, and if they don't do it, and we have to go into the open market to do it, then we need to get reimbursement from them for whatever amounts that we have to pay up. Now, if you, uh, want me to contact Bynum Fanyo and bring this to their attention, I'm happy to do this, or in the alternative, you can let it ride until the next contract comes up and address it as part of that, but we're still almost two years, two years away from that. That's the biggest question, I'm happy to do whatever you ask me, Danny.
I just think we need to get a hold of them.
Get a hold of them, talk to them.
Yeah.
Happy to do that.
Okay. So, maybe I come to the next meeting and see where that stands, maybe?
You're, you're always welcome to come to any meeting that you want to, for the night, I have a definitive advance in four years, a good question, but I'll, I'll get that up.
If I could jump in right now, then, so at this point in the game, I, I haven't been called to haul since December twenty-fourth, and then they have now started hauling. So, at this point in the game, they are charging you, uh, I'm just kinda clarifying what you're saying, so they are actually charging the city now for something that they should not be charging. So, um, you're gonna contact them, and then they're just gonna say, that's not part of our contract, and it goes up for bid, I guess?
Well, then you have to decide at that point in time, if they say it's not part of our contract, within that, we wanna give them thirty days' notice to terminate the agreement, which then creates an entirely different set of problems, uh, so.
If they, does the whole contract have to be terminated, like, I know they do the waste act treatment and stuff, the recording and stuff like that, or just the hauling?
We can modify, modify the contract, my agreement, it won't hurt. So, we don't, we don't have to throw out the entire agreement, uh, in attempting to do a modification, but I guess, I guess, the question to the board before I, I contact them is, and I'll go back through this again, going off half cock, uh, i- is to tell them that we're considering not paying the hauling fees because we believe that it's part of this, that's, that's how we play hardball. Is that what the board wants me to do? I'm happy to do that.
Make a motion to have Kerry, okay, to help with them?
I'll double check the contract, if I find out that I'm wrong, I will tell you that I'm wrong, but that's not the way we're gonna do it so far.
Okay.
Perhaps Mr. Hall and I will have, have that discussion.
I'm sure we'll have words over it. They bid on it because it's not part of the contract. I mean, it's thousands and thousands of dollars a year to haul the sludge, and, yeah, there might be a fine line between maintenance and burden. Because if the power, if the plant goes down, the, the seat dies, it's an emergency situation, and.
And they do a lot of other stuff, they might say, we're not gonna do that anymore, then they gotta get out there and get somebody else.
That's, yes.
Like the lift station that we rebuilt last February, pardon me, the lift station that was built last, right here, I should put it last February, it's at the end of the year. But, uh, that was twenty-eight thousand dollars, well, couldn't we just said, well, that's maintenance, you guys didn't do that, we'll pay for the materials plus fifteen percent?
We also had this, uh, what was it, power outage or something, we had, had the lift station down there, and we could not get ahold of Wendy, or Dave, or Barbara, nobody. Steve came out, and we had to empty out that.
Yeah.
Lift station several times. So, that's, I said, he's not always one hundred percent reliable, he can get to us on time.
Again, contracts are made to be specific, and you don't, you don't draft contracts because you trust the other party. You, you draft contracts to be able to litigate this before a judge who can make a decision as to exactly what the contract means. And, um, if there's ambiguity here, then we need to address the ambiguity. If it's, if it's straight up on its face, and I missed a provision, calls for them, calls for us to make those payments, then that's fine. Uh, I promise you, Mr. Na- Mr. Hall and I will have a discussion amicable over coffee, and, uh, perhaps in a local diner, and, uh, and we will make a determination before I send out that letter, how's that?
Sounds good, thank you. Thank you.
Okay, streets?
Well, we have hogs popping up all over the place, we have no.
Did you guys order?
Coat patch?
No, I guess, we still got some down there. Um, before we order coat patch, I'll go go down and talk to Greg, cause Greg, don't we come down and talk to him? I think we might be able to get a little bit cheaper.
Okay.
That was ground dry out.
Now, sorry. All right.
We can jump by the highway.
All right.
We can jump by the highway.
State?
That is.
I went down, I'm gonna do it on a trash.
No state.
In Dodge.
In Dodge.
I don't know whether they got greater value using that or not.
I don't know where they got greater value than that, I don't know.
Fire?
I think it's going pretty good, getting charged up in my shirt tomorrow, so, probably gonna be dead tomorrow.
Alrighty, the burnt out, burnt out house on North Street.
Plated skulls.
Yeah, he got one, I got one.
I got one.
You got one.
It's funny, yeah.
We need to figure out what we can do fast. I'm just saying that there's a lien order.
Uh, I, I'm happy to go down and, and, uh, take a look at it, first of all. I'll track down who the record owner is of the property and contact them under our, our rubbish and trash orders. As, I guess what I, I don't want to get to the place, I wanna put the fear of God in them in terms of cleaning it up. Ultimately, if they don't do that, are we in a position financially to commit the time and resources to clean it up and go after it? Cause that, that's, that's the problem. That, that's, that's what I've had a problem with in the past is, is.
He's willing to give the property away, if there wasn't a lien against it, we're, we're okay, we can tear it down and do it to it, it becomes town property, but he would sign it over to us. But there's a lien against it, if it becomes government property, cause we own by the town, right? But I still, that lien, follow it or does it go away?
So what, what we would do is send a series of letters and fines, notification of fines, and then if it doesn't happen, then we can use our own crews, do whatever it takes to go in and clean it out and then put a mechanic's lien against the property. That mechanic's lien doesn't make it our property, gives us the, the possibility of, of foreclosing on the property and getting our money back. So it's a, it's a, again, it's, it's not an easy or inexpensive process to get it taken care of, but it's the only process that you have. So if you want me to do that, I'm happy to try.
We have to get something, we mean, we haven't done anything that's wrong, we thought better, we haven't done anything.
And what, do you, do you know what the address is, is it one, two, three?
Terry, I thought you, um, checked into that at one time, about a year, year and a half ago, the guy came in from Tennessee or something and.
We got, no, that was, that was the guy that I did get the one taken care of here, uh, that was.
We got a house on North Street, third.
That's the one we got resolved.
So there's another, that guy we're talking about now on North Street, he came to a meeting at one time. And we was gonna get the ball along with them and we did.
So the question is, will present a lien, the current lien that's on that property? If the town demands it be cleaned up, it's not cleaned up, we go in, we clean it up, we file a lien, is the other lien still gonna be there?
Which lien are we talking about?
We was mechanic's lien for installing a furnace and central air and maybe something else.
That, that he had, that he, not, we, we didn't place a lien, the mechanics did. So they have one year from the day of the placement of the mechanic's lien to foreclose on that mechanic's lien. If they don't foreclose within that one year, then the lien goes away.
It costs more to pay it up than it's worth.
Yeah.
It's gotta be done.
I guess in the alternative, do you, do you want me to, to ask whether or not he would quitclaim that property over to us, deed it over to us and thereby relieve himself to the obligation of paying it up?
And they deed it to us, we don't want to pay his liens.
Pardon me?
We have paid his liens.
No, because that lien's expired.
Okay. If we, we take it over, it's, it's gone away?
Yeah, but if we take it over and he has, you know, if he's a deadbeat and has not paid his bills and they've sued him and there are judgment liens against the property, then that's, if we take a deed to the property, then those, those judgment liens are gonna be superior to our, our lien and we would have to clean those up, or in the alternative, those expire at the end of ten years.
End of how many years?
Ten, ten years from the date of.
So are you recommending filing a lien against it for a sewer bill or just like ride at this point?
I'd go ahead, I'd go ahead and file a lien if we have a legitimate lien, I, as I'm sure you do, um, go ahead and file, file a sewer lien and figure out where it is. But again, there's a, a second order here.
Can we, can we not look in to see if there's a lien, what liens are against the property?
Assessors office, wasn't there, yeah, assessors office.
Well, before, before we would, we.
That way, that way, before we go after the property, we'll know if there's, we'll try and pay or if everything's already expired.
Uh, before, before I, before I take a quitclaim deed, alright? I would wanna know whether or not that's something that he's interested in doing. If he's not interested in doing it, then I'm not gonna have the town spend three hundred fifty dollars to do a judgment lien search to figure out what liens are, are against the property. So if he says, yeah, I'll do that, then that will then trigger us to see exactly what we're going to be getting for our money.
I think he bought that house on a contract. Looks like, looks like you did that.
Clean up the town one, one track at a time.
That's right, sir. One way or another.
Is that one twenty three?
East North Street or West North Street?
West North Street.
Yeah, West North.
One twenty three West North? I'm on it.
Thank you.
Kimberly, I just wanna ask for permission from the BFW to use the park on Easter?
No.
Or not Easter, Sunday, but the Saturday before, April nineteenth. I can't remember if I asked for it to be lumped in with the holiday festival and, um, lazy days or not. I think it is, it always changes, I don't have a problem with it.
They always use it.
The BFW can use the park on April nineteenth, if it's Easter, pile them paper.
One other thing before we close, I might also indicate that with regard to the treatment center, I did send a letter to the county sheriff.
Okay, good.
Have, putting him on notice that we were interested in the property, that we had not been consulted. And if he finds out anything to the contrary, it would be of interest to the sheriff.
Okay, that's good.
I got a third here if you want.
Um, make a motion to the chairman? All in paper or on a plea?